I'm surprised we actually still have this sheet that you can do it from home. Because I. Although you have a soft spot for some of our clients who don't live here. That's, that's just.
Where'd you go, Jack?
Good evening, everybody. This is a meeting of the zoning board of appeals for the town of Eastham. Today is December 5th, 2024. This is a partly remote participation meeting and the members of the board are all gathered here in the Earl Mountain Room at Town Hall. Applicants and the public may participate in person here or online through the Zoom app or by phoning in. This meeting will be live broadcast on local access channel 18 and streaming on the town website. Under the executive order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law signed by former governor Charlie Baker in March 12th, 2020, all members in any meeting of the public body may participate remotely. I'm Joanne Verlinden, Chair of the Zoning Board, and I will be conducting the meeting tonight. Before we begin, I want to explain just a few of the procedures we'll follow. I will introduce the case to be heard, name the board members who will be seated on the case. This will be followed by a presentation by the applicant or, I think in this case tonight, the applicant's representative, Mr. Ben Zender. And the, and he will present to us the nature of the case, the reasons for requesting both a variance and a special permit. Following that, board members might ask questions. At any point in the process, the applicant or the applicant's representative may request a continuance to make appropriate revisions to the application. If a hearing is to be continued to a later meeting, a motion is required and shall contain a date certain for the hearing to resume. Any revised or supplemental information for the board shall be submitted no later than the Thursday prior to the next regularly scheduled meeting. When board members have finished their questions, we'll open the meeting to the butters and other interested members of the public. And the, if they have questions for the applicant or the applicant's representative, they may be responded into in that, in that fashion. When it appears there's no more questions, we'll close the meeting to the public. The board may then spend some time discussing the application and when ready, proceed to a reading of the findings of fact. And following that, a reading of the conditions. The last order of business for us will be to decide whether to approve or deny the applicant's requests and a vote will be taken. So our case tonight is ZBA number 2024 dash oh six, 245 Norset Light Beach Road, map 23 parcel 25. Chris Carter and Deanna Carter, owners and applicants seek a variance pursuant to Massachusetts general law, chapter 40A, section 10, and Eastham zoning bylaw, section 7.2.4 setback requirements to demolish an existing dwelling due to coastal bank erosion and construct a new dwelling at five foot setbacks from the property line in violation of minimum property setback requirements. The applicants also seek a special permit pursuant to Massachusetts general law, chapter 48, section 6, and Eastham zoning bylaw, section 19.2, nonconforming uses, buildings, structures, to increase the existing habitable space nonconformity for the proposed new dwelling under Eastham zoning bylaw, section 2.4.1.7. A vote may be taken. Seated on this case will be myself, Martin Ridge, Bob Sheldon, Jared Carey, Douglas Byrd, and Justin Kennington. And Mr. Zender, we're happy to hear from you.
So you're, it, it, it sounds like you're seating six members.
Yeah, you named six.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I, you're right.
Somebody gets, somebody gets asked.
Yeah.
And I mean asked, not act.
Everybody but Justin.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Sorry.
I'm sorry. Okay. Um, good night. Good evening, everybody. My name is Ben Zender. As I always say, it's great to be here in front of you. I, I, I love coming in front of this board. Uh, with me to my left is Sabella Santi-Grohl, who's our project architect and online, I believe, for Chris and Deanna Carter, who are the property owners. I always start with why we're here. You know, and, and the reason we're here is because Chris and Indiana are asking for two forms of relief. One is a variance from your setback requirements. Because the, the project that I'm about to describe requires that it be cited closer to both rear line and sideline setbacks that are permitted under your zoning by law. On the national seashore, you cannot be any closer to a road than 50 feet and any closer to an interior lot line than 25 feet. And as you'll see, the structure is as close as five feet to some lot lines under the plans. We're also here for a special permit to increase the floor area size of a preexisting nonconforming structure. As you're all aware, you have a bylaw that limits the size of a structure in the national seashore. It's habitable floor area to one and a half times the amount that it, it was in September 1st of 1959, which was the advertising date of the Cape Cod National Seashore Act. This structure was approximately 513 square feet in 1959, but it was then, it was then increased in 1994 to about 1,016 square feet. As you're aware, under general laws, I keep saying as you're aware, I'm sorry. It's like, at least I'm not saying clearly. So, but, but under 48, general laws, chapter 48, you know, if a, if a, a, a variance or unlawful condition exists for 10 years and the property can be treated as a, as a preexisting nonconforming structure for special permit purposes. And this project, we're requesting to increase the, uh, the square footage on this property right now from, bear with me one second. I'll have the numbers for you. From 1,211 square feet of site coverage to 1,356 square feet. I'm sorry, 1,359 square feet, which is an increase of about 148 square feet. That number's important because under your zoning by law, in, in the Cape Cod National Seashore, the trigger for residential site plan review by the planning board is an increase of 200 square feet or more in the size of the structure. So this does not require review by the planning board. And in submitting our materials to the building inspector, he indicated that we were required to come before this board for the variance. And we've also applied for a special permit. So the structure was built in 1995. You've all been out to see it. It was increased in size in 1994. The proposal is to remove the entire structure because as the board can see from the site plan, it's dangerously close to an erosive condition on, on, on the eastern bluff. The lot itself is a, is an unusually shaped lot. It looks almost like a horseshoe shape. And the, and there's a small piece of Cape Cod National Seashore land that extends into this lot, which makes the lot very difficult to deal with in terms of being able to try to locate a structure and also in terms of the physical, you know, requirements of moving a structure. So the proposal is to remove the structure that's, um, uh, that's closer to the ocean and then build a new structure in the, in sort of the far back westerly, northwesterly section of this, of this lot. You all can see the lot. On the second page of our submission shows in, in a red shaded area, the actual buildable areas of the lot based on your setback requirements. And, and you can see that there is a very small buildable area in the front portion closer to the ocean. And then in the rear portion where the house has to go, there's almost no area whatsoever for, for location. So I think that will demonstrate to the board the hardship in terms of trying to locate a structure that's, um, that's conforming as to the, as to the setback requirements. Your, in order to grant a variance from setback requirements, we're required to, and we bear the burden of proof of, of showing you three things. First thing we have to show you is that, um, we'll suffer a hardship if the relief is not granted. And, and we assert that the hardship, if the relief is not granted, will be the inability to locate a home on the property. We think that's a substantial and significant hardship. It is in some respects a financial hardship, but it's also a use hardship. You know, the applicant doesn't have the ability to continue to use their property for the remaining time that that land will be available for, for occupancy. Understanding that the, that the, uh, the dune is marching, is marching westward. We also have to demonstrate to you that that hardship is owing or related to a condition that affects the lot particularly, but not the zoning district as a whole, that is related to either the topography of the lot, its soil condition on the lot, or the shape of the lot. In this particular matter, um, you know, sometimes I come in front of you and we're struggling to find one condition. You know, we have a flat level lot. We need a variance. We don't get it. This one actually has a topographical condition, significant topographical condition, which is the, which is the fact that although Chris and Deanna own 32,975 square feet of land, a significant portion of that is uninhabitable because it's either on the beach or on a coastal dune. The topography of that, of that dune does not lend itself to any use whatsoever, let alone residential use. So they're, they really can't use that portion of land. They also have a, um, a soil condition. You know, the, the soil condition is that the geological makeup of Cape Cod in this, in this place is just falling away into the ocean. If this were, you know, it's for bedrock, maybe that wouldn't be happening. And finally, they have a shape condition. The shape of this lot, which you can see is extremely unusual, really lends itself to restricting the buildable areas to only those areas that don't meet the setback requirements. You just literally cannot locate a house in this lot that's going to meet the setback requirements of 50 feet from away or 25 feet from, from an interior lot line or, um, or a rear lot line. So, um, I hope the board will make a finding of fact that, that, that those conditions exist and the hardship exists. Finally.
Okay, I'm sorry, Ben.
No, no, go ahead.
Martin, uh, you were talking about what we had to satisfy for the variance and you talked about the hardship and the, um, owning to topography. And then what was the third one?
It's topography, soil condition, or shape.
Right.
So what I, I'm, it's really all three.
They're all three, yeah. Was, was there another one after that?
No, it's just the three. And finally, well, when I said finally, I meant the third leg of, I call it.
Third leg, that's what I was.
Yeah, because if you don't have the three legs on the stool, it falls over. So the third leg of the stool is that we have to demonstrate that the relief can be granted without substantiating derogating from the spirit or the intent of the bylaw. And, you know, this gets a little more abstract, but the intent of the bylaw in creating setback requirements is to minimize, um, density and crowding and encroachment of structures on other structures. You all know this and it's kind of a matter of common sense, but when we walk around a neighborhood, we don't see lot lines. We don't know who owns how much property, but we see our structures. And we see improvements and the reason that we have setback requirements is to, especially the national seashore, is to create open space and to minimize the density of those structures as they sit on the land and.
So if I could stop you, so how is the soil condition and the topography unique to this lot as compared to the whole area?
Well, it's not unique to only those lots that are existing on the bluff. You're right. But the standard, the standard is unique to the lot and not to the zoning district as a whole.
That's correct. So how is it, you, how is it unique to the lot as compared to the zoning district?
Well, the zoning district of the Cape Cod National Seashore comprises, I don't even know what the percentage is, Paul could probably give it, but I'll, I'll bet it's probably close to 25% of the town, maybe 20% of the town. And most of the land of the national seashore does not directly butt the Atlantic Ocean or the coastal dune. Most of the land in the seashore is inland land. So it does not affect, or at least presently, it doesn't affect any of those lots that are, that are westward of this lot or westward of those lots that are directly in the ocean. So I hope that's sufficient explanation.
But it's the same as all of the other lots facing the ocean up and down the bluff.
It is. It's the same as the lots facing the bluff, but those are not the zoning district as a whole. Those are, that's a subset of the lots.
Yep.
So, um, and so the, you know, if the intent of the, of the setback provisions is that you, um, you, you minimize uh, encroachment and visual massing and, and pushing of houses near each other. In this area in the national seashore, the houses are not on top of each other. There's a significant amount of open space. In fact, um, they're abutted by the national seashore on, um, I believe all sides. So, um, this relief can be granted, um, whether this house is 50 feet from, um, what I'm going to call C Street, which is the westerly way, or whether it's five feet. It's not going to significantly change in any way, shape, or form how people view this house, how the public will see this house, view the house, or the visual amassing or encroachment of one structure upon another. So, um, I, I believe that we have satisfied all three of the.
Okay.
Like the stool, for lack of a better, lack of better, uh, for lack of a better statement. With your permission, uh, I think Ms. Verlinden, the chair, um, I won't go into the special permit granting criteria unless the board wants me to.
Not yet.
Okay, thank you.
Please.
So with that being said, we've submitted a, a plan for the structure, um, which I think is a, is a, is an attractive plan. I have only seen one correspondence, I think from the Cape Cod National Seashore. I don't know if there were other correspondences in the file. Seashore has raised some issues that I am prepared to address at, at the appropriate time according to the chair, but I do note the seashore is not contesting the size of the structure that, or the design of the structure other than its location. So I'm hoping that, um, you know, Sabella can answer any questions about the design. You know, it's the house that Chris and Deanna want to build.
Right.
You know, it's time.
The, the seashore primarily is concerned about the location.
Exactly. So with, with those comments, um, I'm here to answer any questions that you have along through the process. Thank you.
That's, that's okay, Don. I'll join. I have a few questions on, um. I agree with you on the premise of moving the house east to west and that we're, that the topography does lend itself that the cliff is falling. So as far as we're going west and granting a variance there, I don't agree that the variance going north to south is a hardship. It looks like that the septic design there is a standard septic design. And I, I don't see any reason why the house couldn't have been centered on that parcel of land and been approximately, you know, 20 to 25 feet from the north and south border. There's been no requirement, you know, that septic system could be split between both sides of the house. And, um, so I, I wouldn't be, um, in a favor of giving a variance on that south border.
But I'm, I'm a little lost, yeah.
But that primary, primary reason is that the, the hardship was inflicted by your design, not by the, by the cliff falling.
The hardship of locating the, the house as far to the south in that portion of the lot, it has, it has, okay.
Your 40 something feet from the north side.
Yeah, I, I, I believe, and I don't, I don't know if Laura's on, um, or engineer, but you know, the, the regulations require certain things.
I know.
And one of those things is that you have to maintain a setback distance from the lot line. One of those is you have to maintain a setback system, setback distance from the structure to the.
Ben, Ben, before you go any further.
Yes.
The most important thing is deciding of the house, right?
Okay.
And we're all agreeing that we want to push back from the, from the dune as far as we can. So why did we go to the board of health to get approval first? I mean, because, because you have a, you have, I'm just cutting to the chase.
I understand.
The septic system that's there is fine. But I've seen many, many septic systems approved in this town that get around issues like this. So I think you've got a, in my view, the house has to be centered north to south. And let your engineer figure it out after that.
Well, okay, but.
Because you're, you're creating the hardship to the south.
Well, I, I whether you're done. Okay.
Okay. Right. I mean, that the design does, not, not the seashore, not the eroding cliff.
Okay. Well, I'm just, I'm thinking this through. If we, if we move the leach component, and let's say we get a variance from the board of health to locate that a foot off the northerly lot line.
Yeah.
Okay. That gives us 10 feet further. We can move the house to the north.
But then you can, but then the house can get within 10 feet of the leaching field.
But then you're suggesting that we also get a, a variance from the 20 foot requirement from the house to the leaching field and from the.
I'm saying the most important thing was citing the house. I'm not going to design your septic system here, but if the most important thing is citing the house, then you should have cited the house, then gone to the board of health and said, here's where I'm putting my components. Instead, you've come here with an approved septic design from the board of health and I'm not allowing you down the path of saying, I've already got this approved because I know we can do other things. So we're, I'm not, I'm not going to be in favor of going north, south.
Okay. Are you suggesting if we go to the board of health and we don't get the variances that are required, that this setting is okay?
No, I'm saying that, that you're going to go to the board of health and, or your engineer and design a different system. That the, the only reason we're pushing to that south border is because you have a standard septic system design. And you put, and you put, put the components in their ideal locations.
It could be placed other way.
Understood. No, 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 I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not arguing, I'm not arguing with the board. I'm, I'm, I'm understanding, I'm understanding exactly what you're asking of us and what your concerns are, and I think I understand them. You know, that would require, you know, Laura Freeman going to the, first of all, designing a system that, you know, that will meet the requirements to the greatest extent possible and then asking for those variances. And it's, it's entirely possible we could. The other thing that's going to happen though, looking at this thing is that, um, you know, we're going to lose an area of parking, meaning we can't park in the national seashore's land. We can't drive in the national seashore's land.
But you could, you could move the septic system under the driveway, for example.
Yeah.
If we move the septic system under the driveway.
We don't want to redesign it here, right?
Well, you're asking us to redesign it. I want to make sure I walk out of this room understanding exactly what, what's happening. So.
We're trying to get more distance from the seashore property. And if you find a different way to, to locate the septic system, we can get this, uh, house situated at least 10 feet away from seashore property rather than just the five.
I understand. So you're looking for a 10 foot distance from the south side of the house?
No, I'm looking, sorry, Joanne.
Okay.
I want you to come with a plan that shows the house centered. Right? Dead center of the lot, so equal distance from both, because you're going to need a variance to the north and to the south.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Because you don't have the 50 feet to the north either. So we're giving you a variance to the north and we're going to give you a variance to the south potentially. And we're going to give you the maximum variance to the west. So I think it's fair for us to ask is that the variance to the north and the south are the same. And if you come back and you decide that our engineer could not figure out a way to do that, then you can come back and ask us, this is why we're shifting the house further one side or the other. But until you come back and tell me that, that your engineer can't do it, then, then that hardship of having the house harged to the south border is self-inflicted.
So and a somewhat related question is the square footage of the house because they're increasing.
We haven't, we haven't. We're just talking.
That'll reduce the impact if they reduce the square footage of that.
Of course, they could put a smaller house into that spot.
Exactly. It'll reduce the impact on the setback.
Good point. Uh, you said, or you wanted to speak, please.
Uh, I just wanted to add that the challenge that the engineer had with the septic system, the drive, and also where you could do a turnaround and come out, parking, driveway, septic. So that's why she felt that that corner was the location that it had to be where we could locate the house.
All right.
Just sharing the reasoning why she put it there.
I put, I put in a couple of septic systems in my day and I reviewed many plans that the town has done, including some neighbors. And there's no reason you can't put the septic tank on one side of the house and the leaching field on the other side of the house. And, you know, it's just a little bit more, it's happened in the past 12 months here in town.
You, 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 you pipe your affluent out to a septic tank and then pump it around the house to the.
I don't, I'm not going to design the system for you. I'm just saying, I've seen many, many examples of creative ways to install septic systems that are, that are approved by, by the Eastham Board of Health. This is a off-the-shelf cookie cutter design that you, that you, as a client chose, but that's then forcing us to give you a grant of, um, variance to the south.
No, no, I understand.
It's being more impactful than it has to be, is my point.
No, I, 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 I think I understand the comments. I, and I understand the request. Um, and thank you for that. Yeah. So any other, any other comments that I need to hear before we, I, I, I just think we're not looking at approval. So I'd like to get as much information as I can before I walk out.
So two questions, I, well, they're related. So it's clear that the cliff is like collapsing, right? The driveway comes in along the edge of the cliff.
Right.
What's the access to this house if the cliff collapses to the point where the driveway is no longer usable?
Well, I think the access to the house is probably going to be from the west. But that would involve cutting a new driveway through the national seashore, which is, is possible, but there's a process of applying for a special use permit and you work with the seashore to, 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 not to get overly complicated, the applicant, by reason of the existence of the house on this plane, has a right to use all the ways shown on the plane as are necessary to get to the, the property. We really try and applicants try and the seashore tries not to cut new roads if they can help it. So this has been designed to, to use the existing road. When that road becomes unusable, then they're going to have to design a new way, either coming from the north or coming from the west. You, you'll see those roads on three sides of this property, maybe from the south.
So currently there's no long-term plan for access to the site?
No, no, that will, I mean, at some point it will become necessary, but.
What's the, what's the distance from the center of the drive to the, to the bluff at this point?
Looks to me like it's maybe 35, 40 feet.
Right. And, um, turnkey, after two years of construction with all the equipment going across that drive, two years from now, when the house gets inspected by a fire department, how far is the drive going to be at that point? We don't know. I'm not going to ask. And at what point is the fire department going to say, our nice shiny red equipment doesn't feel comfortable going down, driving along 300 feet at the edge of the cliff to gain access to that property? So in short order, we're going to be talking about giving you additional access from the west.
You may, but I'm just not sure why those are, I don't think those are zoning considerations. I think those are.
Well, we're trying to, we're trying, we're trying to give you a variance. Well, no, hold on. We're doing a variance that take, makes the least impact on the butters. And by giving you this variance, we're almost guaranteeing that the, the butter next door, whether it's the seashore or the property owner, is going to have an additional drive adjacent to or through their property.
Are you suggesting that if you don't give us the variance and my client loses this house, that we won't help, that your neighbors want it to suffer?
No, no, no. My question to you was, what's the plan for long-term access to the site? And you didn't have an answer.
The plan for long-term access, because there's going to be when and if it's necessary. Because look, you have to remember, the planning process for cutting a road is probably a year with the national seashore. You have to, you have to locate where you want to put it. You have to submit a special use permit to the seashore. You have to come up with a protocol. They have to.
Wouldn't that make a more complete presentation if you had said that to us this evening?
I don't think it's part of our presentation. I don't think it's required to be part of our presentation. I, I understand the signing, but I, I think the members are wondering in an area that is really not part of the consideration for a variance for the granting of movement of a house.
Well, it's, we're, we're trying to give relief that's going to be granted, that keeps faith with the overall bylaws.
What does the location of that road have to do with the overall faith, the faith of the overall bylaws?
Access, Ben.
Access is a planning board concern.
Well. Well, the impact on the butters, right?
I may.
Yeah. Paul, please.
This is coming up during the variance discussion part, but there's also the other part of this is the special permit. And part of the special permit criteria that is under the purview of the ZBA does include adequacy of the site, traffic flow, traffic management access. So these issues about the driveway access, I mean, they're going to, they're perfectly valid to talk about once we get to the special permit part.
I disagree. It's, 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 if you'll permit me, adequacy of traffic flow management within the site as well as in relation to adjoining streets and properties. There's no, there's no question that the existing driveway is adequate for this property.
At this time.
At this time. So, I mean, does the board want to start saying, well, we don't, we think maybe your driveway won't be good in five years or 10 years and therefore you can't get a variance?
Well, it's, again, this is not. I agree with you. It's not part of the variance criteria. It's part of the special permit criteria.
I disagree. It, the question is.
Part of the special permit criteria, section 4.4 in that list of things.
I'm reading it right here, but, but I, I'm struggling to find the ability of the board to make a finding of fact that the, that the access to this property is not adequate. You can say it may not be adequate in a number of years, but, you know, when you're talking about where we're going to relocate a driveway in the future, that's a planning board concern. Oh, and it's a private property rights concern.
I think it's, if you, through you, uh, you don't mind, I think you have a point, whether you could argue whether it's the existing current use versus potential future. But this board does have its purview under the special permit criteria to talk about it. It's not planned. They're coming to you, you're, this is before the board has a special permit. So yes, when we go to the planning board, yes, they have that, but they also, it's overlapping. So they have, number one, adequacy of the site, suitability for the proposed structure, adequacy of traffic flow management access to and within the site. That was our special permit granting criteria.
Again.
Planning board also has the same criteria. So there's overlapping criteria.
I understand that, but, but the board at some point in its, in its consideration, it's going to make findings of fact about this application. And if the board were to make a finding of fact that they were going to deny this because they felt, they felt that the, the existing access to this property was not sufficient. First of all, I don't think, I don't think it's a basis to make that finding of fact. And if the board were to make a finding of fact that they were going to deny relief because they found that in an, in an undetermined number of years, the driveway may not be sufficient and the applicant hasn't shown where they're going to put the driveway at the time that it becomes insufficient, I, I don't think that's supportable. Again, I, you know, I, I'm not going to kill myself on this because you're coming in with a new design anyways, but I just, it's, there's certain times in my role that I have to push back against boards and say, just because the bylaws says adequacy of traffic flow management within the site as well as in relation to adjoining streets and properties, in what way is this, is this access inadequate really in relation to adjoining streets and properties?
Okay. We, we, I think we can agree that for the moment, the driveway would be adequate. I think the board and Mr. Legg are looking to the future. We've, we've seen in the last several years, a number of properties that had to be moved back because of coastal erosion. And, and having gone through those experiences with various other owners, it seems like it's a good thing to look down the road and, and just anticipate what could possibly happen. While, while we're talking a little bit about the special permit, one of the objections that the seashore raised has to do with the, as long as we're talking, because ultimately I think you have to come back to us with a, a better plan.
I agree. Well, I won't, I'm going to say better, but we have, we have to come back to you.
Okay, up, an updated plan. But, but the seashore is also objecting to the stairway getting to and from the outdoor shower.
Right.
And the stairway, um, on the, on the deck.
Yep.
The outdoor deck there.
Yeah. If I could address that for one moment, um, the seashore's position has been pretty consistent over the years. They ask for a 10, it's usually a 10 foot setback. I've seen permits where we go five feet. Generally, they're looking for 10 feet, but the reason they're looking for 10 feet is because of what they call overdick, meaning when you, when you pour a foundation, you have to dig a hole and there's an angle of repose and you all kind of, I'm not an engineer, but I kind of understand this. So the 10 foot is designed to protect that angle of repose in the overdick. The foundation here is set back, I believe, pretty close to that 10 feet. Those five foot, that's an outdoor shower. Those are both deck structures which don't involve that angle of repose. But we're actually being consistent with what the seashore has requested over the last, it's been an issue for maybe 15 years now, because that's the time we've been dealing with these.
We do have a new superintendent.
No, I understand that, but I'm just saying, I'm saying that, you know, look, what we try to do here, what the applicant's trying to do, and it's, it's been very consistent from town to town even, is they're trying to move back the structure as far as they can to maximize this last move of the house. So that five feet on the other end, you know, means, and that may well be the five feet that you're trying to get your house out of there or whatever. That's the reason you move it back. Boards have historically, and not just Eastham, but Wolfly and Crowe, have, have been, have been consistent in that 10 foot setback to the foundation to maintain that. We've maintained that. I understand that you look at it from a bird's eye view and it's showing five feet, but those structures.
I thought, and I don't have the letter in, in front of me unfortunately, but I thought they specifically talked about sort of people traffic using those stairs and, and being too close to the seashore property.
That's another topic.
But, but then I wanted to bring up in that case, they also, I thought, requested a fence around this area to mark the property. And I sort of, and I sort of thought to myself, well, if there's a fence there.
They're not asking.
Who cares if there's people? Oh, no, okay.
Asking for a permanent visual barrier.
A visual barrier. I see. Okay.
It could be something as simple as four by four posts with a rope between them, but they want to have something that's visual.
Okay, but that, that, it still seemed to me that I didn't understand if, if the concern is, I don't want people using this staircase and therefore walking onto seashore property, you know, disturbing things, but also there's a rope barrier. I feel like, you know, one or the other seemed maybe.
We have no problem with either, either a vegetative or, or a physical barrier.
My point was, I didn't, if, if you're going to put some sort of physical barrier, I didn't see why you need to move the stairs for the human traffic reason. That's all.
So, yeah. Hey, Paul. So just for my own education, so let's assume the driveway collapses. Is it almost a matter of right that they can get access from one of the other streets through the national seashore?
Well, as attorneys under said, there's, they have the right to utilize those paper roads to gain access, but it's a little complicated because they have to basically work out a, work out a deal with the seashore because the paper road is on now on the seashore. So that's in my mind, not, that's something between the owner and the seashore.
And whatever other property.
But could the seashore deny access to the road? No.
The way it works is this. The seashore, under the Cape Cod National Seashore Act, there's no authority in the superintendent, who, and, and the, the act talks about the Secretary of the Interior, but the, but the designated agents of superintendent in, in Wolfly. There's no authority for the superintendent to grant property rights. They cannot, they cannot deed land. They can't grant easements. Unless there's, there's a limited mechanism for land swaps, you know, that we can do that. But the seashore superintendent has the authority to grant what are called SUPs, special use permits. And special use permits range in, in, it could be as simple as a license to maintain an existing utility line, you know, that's going across seashore land. It could be, you know, when you rent one of those dune shacks at Pickett Hills, you get a special use permit. They lease, the Cape Cod Modern House Trust, some houses, including, you know, one of my dad's on long-term leases. Those are special use permits. So they have that authority to cut a road across seashore land. And the way that these plans work, they're these old plans from the turn of the last century, and generally speaking, most of the landowners own to the center line. So the road ownership is, is a combination of all those little pieces of land that people own next door.
Ben, are you saying that's the case here?
I, well, I haven't, I haven't run the title between this house and the road because I haven't had to, but I'm, I, I, I would probably bet a couple of days' pay that that's the case. I wouldn't bet a week's pay. But it's, the only way it isn't that is if the initial developer in their initial deeds out said, we're reserving to ourselves the ownership from the road.
The reason, the reason I bring that up is because when you look at the overall lot line,
Yep.
the seashore's property to the west
Yep.
is only as wide as the paper road. Then it turns back to private property again.
Right.
So it, and it, that, so that indicates to me is that the private roads in this section of the seashore are indeed owned by the seashore.
Anywhere the seashore owns on both sides of the road, they own that section of road. If, if they own and a private property owner are across from each other, they each own it. It's, and I, I'd have to do a title search.
Well, I'm saying in this case, there's, there's a narrow forty foot strip of land going between two private properties that the seashore owns, which is, happens to be the right of way. So my argument is that that proves to me that the seashore indeed owns the right of way in this area.
No, I don't believe that's a right of way.
It's called C Street to the west.
Oh, I thought you were talking about the piece that was in between the lots.
No, no, sorry, sorry. No, I wasn't talking about that.
Yeah, the C Street is owned, it looks to me like, like Chris and Deanna would own the easterly side of C Street as it abuts their land. The seashore went on, assuming the seashore's on the other side of the road, the map doesn't show that.
No, there's another map here that does. That's private on the other side.
Turns into the next lot.
Somebody else's house.
Okay. Anyways.
And then, but, but then south of that, it's probably seashore on both sides of the road.
Probably is, but, but to kind of get back to the main, my main point is under the doctrine of implication, it says that when a developer deeds out lots shown on a plan, even if the developer doesn't put that in the deed, there's an implied right of access to get to the lot from the main road, which makes sense, right? You, so, which says a developer is a stop from saying you can't get to your lot. That, that right continues down through time, which means that Chris and Deanna have the right to use the ways shown on that plan to get out to the nearest public road.
Right, right. And if this was just an abandoned lot when the house falls down, then they would have the right to access that piece of property.
Well, they have the right to access, no matter what.
But, but we're now going to allow them to build a potentially a new home, which now gives them the right to build a road to that.
It, the, when they build the road has no bearing. The fact that they own this lot, it's sub, it has those implication rights. They always exist. And so the, the process.
Could they build a road to a, to a lot without a home on it?
Yes.
All right.
Yeah, you, but you buy a lot, the subdivision, you, you got a right to go to the road. You can go out there and, you can go out there and eat your sandwich on it if you want. So, so the right is there, but the mechanism that we do, and to a certain extent, we forbear a little bit because those easement rights exist. The seashore doesn't contest those rights as long as you demonstrate to them through, and we did this, you may remember, we did the one for Maggie Bartlett over at our Grampy's Cottage, you know, closer to the light. You know, they, they're going, you, you participated. They have to cut a new road going in. We went to the seashore. We demonstrate, we demonstrate the rights and then they say, okay, look, you have a legal right to do it, but we want you to apply for a special use permit so we can manage the job. We want to see an insurance policy. We want to know when the work's going to start. We want to know how long it's going to take. We want to be notified. So we apply for a special use permit and, and to a certain extent, we go out there and walk the site with the seashore to figure out what's the best route. You want to, you want to cut the shortest possible road that you can, you know, so.
Just to get back to the seashore's letter quickly, there was a few topics that we, there was three topics they had.
Yep.
The first one is survey permanent stones. I'm sure you guys will take care of that. Item number one.
No. You know, to having a butter come in and require that you do a survey of your property and mark it with stones? I mean, again, you're getting into private property.
That's what the seashore is asking. So you're going, you're going to push back on the seashore on that one?
I'll push back on any butter if they ask for something that isn't typically branded in the zoning context. Yes.
I'm sorry. I'll just reintroduce. So we're going to go back to the seashore letter and we'll just talk about the three items.
Right.
You tell us what you want to do. I'm not telling you you have to abide by any of this. I'm just asking. I want to see what you're doing so I don't screw you up.
Yeah, no, fair enough.
Sorry, sorry.
Oh, listen.
So number one was they're going to require you to, they, they would like to see you do a, a survey, which you already have, and that obtain a legal survey and the placement of permanent stone or concrete boundary markers. That was number one. The second to last sentence in number one. So that the proposed dwelling is aware of the boundary line and does not damage, destroy, or interfere with surrounding CCNS property. So we were considering putting that into the, we thought that was an easy one that we'd put into the conditions. Were you pushing back saying you may not do that?
Well, first of all, ask Christine if they want to bound their property. And I, my guess is the answer will be yes, but we're coming back anyway, so let me know.
So that's there. So let us know. Okay. So.
I'll let you know, but, but I. But hold on, I have, I have to say, you know, again, asking somebody to monument their property is not a zoning issue. It's, it's, look, I would love my neighbor to put monuments on his property so I know he's not driving onto my property.
I know, but I'm trying to address it. It's a letter that came from the seashore to the zoning committee.
And, and, and it, and it's actually a request that the seashore in the past has made, and sometimes my clients say yes, sometimes they say no.
I think it's legitimate for me to ask you if you're going to abide by the letter. I'm not asking you to do that.
Understood.
To make it clear. Okay, thanks.
I'll talk to my client. Okay.
So the second topic is that relates to the setback, to the, to the stairways coming off the deck.
Right.
And, no, I'm sorry. The second one is, sorry.
Continuing an endearing physical delineation.
Yeah, the, the endearing physical.
No, I, I changed the word.
It's enduring. Thanks. It's enduring. Oh, thanks. So a continuous.
Some way of making sure that people don't walk onto the seashore.
Is the minimalist. Yeah. To me, it's, I would put four by four posts with a rope between.
I think it's fine.
And whatever the minimum.
Personally, I think that if anybody wants to walk in the seashore, they can, but there's a difference.
Of course, you can walk, but.
There's a difference between, you, you're, what happens if you don't do that is people's use tends to.
Leave their kayak there.
Right.
And then maybe their boat there.
I think they'll be fine, but I'll check.
Trail home there. Anyways, it's just to be facetious there.
And the third point has to do with those exterior stairs.
Right.
And as I think, as, I think as Mr. Kennedy said, look, I, I think if we, I think if we clearly prevent people from encroaching onto that and we hold the 10 feet on the foundation.
But if you're going to modify the plans.
Yes.
Then you could certainly do something about the exterior stairs as well, I think. And Doug was saying before, if you want to say for yourself about the size of the proposed building, that if you reduced the size somewhat, it could fit into the space that Martin has been suggesting. We could get the 10 foot setback. We could eliminate the problems with the stairs and the other big problem is repositioning the septic system.
Yeah. Again, I, I found myself battling with you tonight in a way that I'm not used to doing this and I, but I like it, you know? No, no, I, I enjoy it. I really do enjoy it. Don't make it to get me wrong. I really, these are the nights that I feel like maybe.
We are all learning things here.
We're all learning. Look, as I explained before, the setback, the, the five foot setback, the 10 foot to the foundation is to get it as far back as possible. We could reduce the house by five feet in width. Right?
Yeah, you could.
And I think you would all feel better.
I'm not, not necessarily.
It, well, yeah, but let me finish.
No, no, I, I'm not. I have not said anything about the size of the house per se.
I think you're, but I, but I want to get this out. Again, and this is more, I, I watch this in conservation. I think about the conservation commission. I'm like, look, they weren't designed, they were designed to keep from building hotels in the mar. They weren't designed to micromanage the size of somebody's birdhouse, right? When we start talking about having Chris and Deanna narrow their house by five feet so they can move it five feet further away from that line where they're, it's just, we're getting to the point of.
What we're talking about is how, how do we, how do we minimize the requests for the variance?
Well.
And when, and when the variance is required because of a topological issue such as the cliff falling, we've been very sympathetic about any migration east to west. We're talking about five to 10 feet here. So no one's pushing back on that. But what we will say, what I will say is that you have a large stairway there and the stairway is eight or nine steps.
You're talking about on the east, on the west side of the house?
The west side of the house, because you're looking for the easement. You're, you're trying to get the maximum variance you can, push the house away from the ocean, and we're agreeing with you. But because the hardship was caused by mother nature, I'm saying that that staircase is caused by your design because your house is seven, over seven feet out of the ground. So you need to have a stairway to go up to the house. And because that stairway now, because the seashore is strictly asking for, quote, we'd like to exclude the proposed exterior access and grant a larger setback to the Cape Cod National Seashore. That's the request to us is to remove that stairway. And that's why I'm pushing it at the meeting. So I'm advocating for the seashore here.
I know.
But we're saying, I contend that the design of your house again is seven feet above the ground, grade level. So it's seven, eight, nine steps up. So now you need a stairway and that stairway is encroaching even closer into the variance. If you didn't require that stairway and the house was down closer to the ground, these, these are just little simple.
I, I understand, but, but, but.
I'm not designing your house, but you're asking me for a variance to be extended because of the design of the house versus the collapsing cliff.
I know, but the board's moving into what I would call an overly tactical review of this project, which again, you're right. They, they, they've minimized the footprint of the house.
I never heard something being overly technical of the design. I mean, you're the expert. You do this for a living and we're asking you questions. Discovering some new stuff here with you, but we're not being overly technical. We're pushing back on things that we see are not the result of a topological condition of the property, that the result of a design or an oversight on the design in the case of the septic or a design of having the house seven feet out of the ground and I need to stay away.
But the reason the house is seven feet out of the ground is saying, we'll say, because look, they're minimizing the footprint of that house to move it as far back as possible. So it's going up instead of, instead of being spread. Right? It's, and, and it's being.
That doesn't make sense.
Well, it does because you have, you have a setback, you have setback.
I didn't, I didn't say anything.
East and south. You have to, you have to go up. It's the only way you can go with this house and maintain your floor area.
The floor, the, the ground floor is seven feet up. I'm not saying anything about the height of the house. The height of the house is fine. You're 30 feet on the dock. But the first floor of a house, there's very few homes in Eastham that the first floor is seven feet up.
Well, if I may please, through the chair.
Sure.
Is that the design of the houses, as you could see, has a small footprint to fit into that little parcel. And plus, in terms of square footage.
They're small houses.
We're kind of, you know, limited to what we can build because of what's there right now. And the height of the house is that we are not even at the maximum height, but what we wanted to do was.
How high, how high is the house by not being at the maximum? What's the actual height?
Well, it's under the required maximum.
By an inch or two.
Right. So what we tried to do is that we set it up so that we went from the top down. So we went, we didn't, we're not looking for any relief for the height of the house as, you know, a right.
But, but because of that design now requires a stairway to the back of the house,
Correct.
Which encroaches upon the variance even more, which was not, which is not a variance that's been, it's not a hardship. The hardship is being taken on by you and your client because of the design, not the cliff collapsing.
Well, the option could be that what we were trying to do is push the house as far away as possible from the ocean. And if need be, that stair, that exterior stair on the western side, we could put that around.
Yeah, that's what they're asking.
The north side and then push the house another five feet, which would be nice too. We could do that as well. So if you don't mind us taking the whole house.
They push the house five feet to the north?
Pushing it to the west. Pushing it to the west where the stairs are.
You're already inside the 10 feet and we've established that 10 feet was the only safe working zone on this type of property.
It makes sense. I mean, I, I, I disagree with Sabell. I, I think.
I'm not asking you to move east, west of the house. I'm okay with where the house is east, west. Me, I'm not speaking for everybody. But you don't need to have a stairway in that location. That's, you know, that stairway in that location extends the variance request. And I'm saying that's because of the design for no other reason, that that has, the location of that stairway doesn't have to be.
Well, when you, you wanted to push the house as far away as possible for obvious reasons, the erosion. And then also to give some kind of a buffer too. So the stairs, instead of the wall being at five feet right there, we felt that that would be a better option, that, you know, the stairs are low. It's an access point. So.
But the problem is that the, the abada doesn't agree with.
If we had to, you know, push the house, if we could push the house another five feet to the west, I believe the clients would be helped, you know, would be very pleased with that.
No one, no one is suggesting that. I don't know where that came from.
So the stairs was another, it wasn't like the whole design was revolved around there. We could take the stairs and put it.
In a different place.
That we could do.
Yeah, the structure.
But the height of the house, really we started from the top and we came down and that's why then it ended up being so high.
And let me be clear, I'm not, I'm not criticizing the design of the house or the layout of the house. And I'm saying even that where the house sits east to west, I'm probably okay with. What I'm saying to be clear is that that stairway doesn't have to be there because that encroaches on the variance.
We'll look at it.
And, I don't know what the other point was.
Of the septic.
We've, we've talked about the septic.
Yeah. Okay. Now we'll, we'll look at that certain.
So I'm clear. Did you just say that you're okay with the current location of the house?
East to west. I'm okay with having a, 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 it looks like eight to 10 foot variance to the west, only to the west. Not north to south.
You're saying not, not counting the staircase.
I'm saying the seashore's reviewed these.
This is the seashore's your neighbor.
Right. And the seashore has agreed to that distance. But they've asked us to remove the stairway to make it clearer.
Got it.
So I'm not asking to move the house further away from the east to west. That's what you came up with on your design and that's what the seashore has approved. But I'm, but I'm, but I'm advocating for the seashore on saying that that, that stairway is not necessary and is not a hardship not to have a stairway. And that that hardship, you know, is impeding on, on, on their property.
But, but I think I thought, I heard you say earlier something about, which I thought about, why couldn't you locate the house in the center part of this parcel?
Oh, yes. North, north to south.
Right.
Yeah, I was talking east to west.
Okay. I was thinking.
Yeah.
Both ways.
Well, both ways gets to the point where they've come and they want to be as far from the ocean as they can.
Yeah, I understand.
And in other projects, even in the past year, we've allowed people to go within five feet of the border and, or maybe 10 feet, sorry.
10 feet.
And this is what they've asked for. The seashore, which is the abada, has agreed to that distance. So we tend to, I'm in agreement that I'm okay with the location of the structure itself east to west. And I already made it clear, north to south, I'm not happy, but.
We'll look at it.
Okay.
So the comments from staff in the report said that other houses have been approved for being close to the property line. So what are the, is, is that kind of been the standard of staying 10 feet away? So what are the, is, is that kind of been the standard of staying 10 feet away from the property line?
There's no stand, there's no rest.
Well, examples, is there any examples?
But I think, the way I look at it, we, we're focusing on these, on that stair because the Seashore has brought it up and it may work out that this resolves. But the way I look at it is the board has to grant a variance based on the hard, the hardship. The hardship is being caused by the eroding cliff and the danger that presents. You, so when I get the house as far away from the cliff as possible, this issue with the stair, it, the stair is, is not part of the hardship. So the edge of the, the edge of the building footprint, the foundation, I mean, if you look at like, we want to be one foot off, we want every last inch, we want to be one foot off that property line. So the foundation is there. Like to me, that is a clearer way to think of it. Like this, the stair, the stairway is confusing the matter, I think, because it's not integral to the hardship. You can design a house that is just on the ground, sits on the ground and the building footprint is as close as you want it to be to gain every maximum inch. I don't know if I'm explaining that right, but.
Yeah, you are. I'm not sure I agree with you, but I.
Well, I guess, let's say the board, get it this way, the board, in my view, the board we justified saying, we'll let you put this, we'll let you put the edge of the footprint, the foundation of the actual house. Like I said, with one, within one foot, because it's going to give you the maximum, the maximum, uh, safety. Not that the edge, it's the edge of the foundation, not, not stair. The stair, that's to Martin's point, the stair is a result of the design of the house. So I would take the stair out and say, what is, what is, where do you want the edge of the foundation to be to maximize the distance? And that's, that's going to be in support of the hardship. That, that's, that's the part that the board's going to be able to say, we're comfortable granting this variance. Because they're putting the foundation of the house, which is what they're trying to do. Not the staircase that lends itself to a design that you do staircase. Like, I think that's the piece that the board has to.
Right.
That, that's the whole crux of the, of the rationale for granting the variance.
Yeah, no, the reason, the reason I'm asking the question is that there's, when I was looking at this, it's balancing the, the value of a setback to preserve the character of the community and the safety of the house by moving it farther away from the ocean. For me, those are the rights that we're trying to balance here. And encroaching to five feet from a property line doesn't feel like a fair balance to me. I'm not sure about 10 feet. But that, but that's the balance, I think we're trying.
Right. And I, and I agree with you.
There's no.
And, and, but since your butter sent us a letter and gave us your.
Yeah, yeah.
It goes a long way.
Exactly. I agree.
But the board's not beholden, sorry, the board's not beholden to grant, every case is unique. So it doesn't matter if the last one next door was five and the other one was 10. It's just every, it's what is this case? What is the unique? Because this little thing, this is a unique site, the hardship is caused by these conditions. But I guess the thing I want to make sure the board understands, because this is going to go back to your findings. And if someone, if Butter to Seashore appeals this decision, they're going to go back to the findings. So you want to make sure you're granting the variance based on the hardship. And that, and to me, I think the operative thing is where is the edge of the foundation of the house, not the staircase. The staircase is like resulting from the design. If this was just on a slab, there is no need to have a staircase. Like think of it that way. Like that's, that's the.
There's no need for a staircase.
And if I may, Madam Chair, just, just building on what Paul's saying. Again, the reason for the five and the 10 foot setbacks is because of over dig. It, that historically, and I'm just telling you historically, why, why the boards have gone with those numbers is because you have to maintain a certain amount.
But Ben, but Ben, the real world is it's also maintenance of the house. You can't get on the roof of a house with a ladder with a few feet.
But if I could finish, if you don't mind, I feel like I'm, I feel like we're engaged in this debate. If I could finish, the reason for the setback again is to, is to, is to eliminate visual massing, encroachment and crowding of buildings. We don't have that here. So that's not a reason. I can tell you with fair, a fair degree of confidence, anybody sitting 30 feet away from this property is not going to be able to tell whether it's five feet or 10 feet off the property line. They're just not going to know. It, it, there won't be any difference visually. And that's a big part of what you do as a board. And finally, when you look at the site plan and you look at C Street, Deanna and Chris own half of C Street. This is not a private property or, or the Seashore coming in saying, look, we're worried you're going to dig up our property. Why don't you move it back five feet or 10 feet? If they over dig, they're digging on their own property. And when they restore that and the foundation gets the as-built certification from the engineers being five feet or 10 feet off their property line, it's still going to be on their property with no impact whatsoever to the Seashore's land. And so.
Ben, Ben, you say that, I don't, I don't know where you're getting the idea that they own to the middle of the street. When we, why, why does that not reflected in the engineering's drawing?
Because it's a way, ways are, okay, again, again, ways are not parts of lots. They're not part of a lot. An engineer's drawing doesn't show the way as part of the lot. You always see a way. The way is owned by somebody. All land everywhere is owned by somebody. So under the derelict fee statute in Massachusetts, unless the, the grantor retains the fee to themselves, they say, I'm giving you lot three, but I'm keeping the road, which they don't really do, then you own by statute to the center line of that road in a line with your boundary lines. And so, you know, again, I'll come back in the next meeting with a title search that shows you this. But as I sit here today, I'm fairly confident that Chris and Deanna own, if that's a 40 foot private way, they own, they own 20 feet out from their lot line, which means that there's no over dig problem, right? There's no physical problem. If they happen to walk on the other side of their lot line where the Seashore wants to have a fence, they're just fencing off their own land. So.
Ben, Ben, you, unless you're, unless you have information to show us this, I, you know, I'd appreciate not making that contention.
I, 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 why not? I'm, I'm counsel for the applicant. I'm telling you what the law says.
I'm only looking at the drawing that you provided.
Well, you're not understanding the drawing.
Martin, Martin, okay. Let's take a little time out here. Everybody take a deep breath. We would like to see some kind of an updated plan that responds to the Seashore's concerns. In which case, we probably need to continue this case to January.
We do. Yeah, thank you.
Are, are you okay with that?
Well, yeah, absolutely. I mean.
Okay.
If we have to.
Before we.
Before we get crazy here, we have other things to talk about, which would be nice to.
The special permit, yeah.
I think we need to talk about the next subject. So when they come back, we don't send them away.
Right, right, absolutely.
Okay.
That's my point.
Okay. All right. So we can move on then to special permit, I guess. And that is to increase the habitable space non-conformity for the proposed new dwelling. Um, and we had we had some questions about the, the actual figures, um, for the increased space.
Do the best I can. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, if, if you could, if you could refresh us on that, please.
Okay, so, and, and, and the problem that we have here, and this is going to get really complicated really fast, is that you have a site coverage by law, but then you have a bylaw with regard to the National Seashore, which talks about habitable floor area. So, and also it's broken down into, um, dwelling space and accessory space. So, um, the, the habitable floor area, as I understand it, um, coming into this is 1,211 square feet. So that's the family room. I'm, I'm looking at the existing plans, okay, which is page EX 1.1.
What was that number again, please?
Yeah, it's, and it's a little, it's, it's, it's actually, the architect broke this down, looking at this plan.
Looks like this.
It's 1,211 total site coverage.
Yes, okay. Yeah, thanks. It's on the wrong page.
So there's, there's 1,211 square feet of total site coverage. And the reason is that your definition is exterior wall to exterior wall. But the calculation of habitable floor area in the bylaw, in, in your, your bylaw talks about Seashore stuff, talks about habitable floor area and coming into the Seashore, just, they just always talked about habitable floor area. So we've done both calculations. So if you look at plan EX 1.1, um, it's 272 square feet of gross floor area to exterior wall, exterior wall. But if you measure interior walls, it's 256 square feet. So, um, and we do the same thing with the living dining area. Um, living dining room, which I believe includes the bedrooms, the covered porch, the primary bedroom. Um, those are all numbered out. So the numbers they're different for livable numbers than they are for gross, for gross floor area, but we've got a total gross floor area for the first floor of this property of 1,211 as we sit here today.
Right. I think you need it. Thank you.
And then, you know, if we, if we add in the, the, the block foundation and the other areas in the basement, we came up to 1,685. Well, that includes the covered porch, the shed.
And the shed.
Yeah, and the shed.
I think the confusion was on the, uh, calculation sheet on the application, it says one, the dwelling is 1,150 plus the 209 is 1,359, but on the Seashore calculation and in, in the narrative, it talks about 896.
Yep.
So, and this might've been my confused. I might not have been reading it clearly or going too fast, but I thought the, I guess, is it, is it going to the 1150 or the 896? Because when I was reading the narrative, I thought, okay, they got, you got, you got the increase back, uh.
Like 94.
Yeah, and that, I don't tend to, I agree with you. It's, it's, uh, you know, legacy protected now.
Yep.
Then I was reading and I thought, okay, well, but they're going back. They'll still be over the 700, the 796, whatever it was.
Right.
But they're going to 896. So they're actually reducing it. But then I saw the other number. Again, I was going through it quickly too. So I guess just my confusion is it, is the new house going to be 1150 or 896?
The new house is going to be, um, the livable floor area is 896. The total gross floor area, um, is 2055. So that's, that, but you're putting in the, um, you're putting in the, um, covered porch into that. So, um, the total livable floor area that's proposed is 573 on the first floor, 323 on the second floor and 896 altogether. Have I got that right?
Correct.
That's the total that we're going to end up with.
Yep.
Yeah.
So that's interior livable area. If you go the, if you go the outside area, it's going to be, um, you've got basement area of 696, uh, first floor of 696, covered porch at 209, we're adding that in. And, and Seashore historically never included porches or covered porches in their calculation. So we're, we, the Seashore calculations historically are just different than your, your current bylaws, like. So if we calculate total livable floor area, it's 896. If we tell them gross floor area, including the basement, which, um, doesn't have any livable area, it's storage and mechanical down in the basement. So if we take gross floor area, um, first floor is 696, second floor is 454 and the covered porch is 209. So it would be 2055 less the basement, which is not in any way livable. So I, it just depends on what numbers you want to go with. I mean.
Yeah, I, I guess just for the boards, from my staff perspective, I agree. This gets very tricky in the Seashore because we have this special 50% rule. There's different terms in the Seashore. We talk about habitable space. We don't really talk about that term anywhere else in town and we usually deal with site coverage and then it's gross. So I, I will say it is very difficult to have apples to apples. And I guess my only thing with, the board's going to have to, you know, consider whether the, uh, you know, I just want to make sure we have the right numbers, basically. I, 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 I think it would be not the best use of time to try to figure out, are we talking about habitable? I would just say, let's get the set of numbers that.
Right.
And then you make your decision about is this. Is, you know, are you comfortable with it? But I just said, I just wasn't sure if it was the habitable space or the site coverage number. What number do you want to go with? So we can kind of base.
Yeah, and, and you have to remember that, look, this isn't playing board site plan review and it isn't even really a special permit based on, on non-Seashore properties. Seashore properties are based on habitable floor area. So, I mean, that's what the bylaw says. So it's, and that's because of Seashore, that's what they talked about under the use guidelines this became a part of. So if we go strictly according to the Seashore stuff, we do habitable floor area, which I, I equate to livable area. We're actually reducing the livable area just because we're not counting the basement and we're not counting the covered porch. So this is, I, maybe we don't even need a special.
Well, I guess that's, sorry, through the.
Maybe that's where Paul was.
I, I was, when I read it, I thought the 896 was what matched up most closely to the habitable space versus.
Yeah.
So I thought, okay, well, well, they're over, but they're, they're over, they, they've been over. That's in the past.
It's in the past. So, so.
But they're actually going, reducing the non-conformity, even though they're still going to be over. I guess that's.
But we are applying for a new, for a new building. It's a totally new property, a house being built on a piece of land. To strictly follow the Seashore rules, why aren't we doing the 1.5% from the 1959 house? I mean, wouldn't the habitable space just the indoor heated space be limited at 769 per the Seashore rules? If we, if we were moving this house or addition, add additions to this house or renovating this house, I could see us grandfathering in that, you know, the statute of limitations run out. This house got bigger than it's supposed to be. We don't, I don't really care to find out why. But it's bigger than it's supposed to be. Why are we carrying that forward if it's a new house from start to finish? If our goal here is to minimize the impact on the environment and on, and on, on the property for the new development, I, I don't, you know, it might take a judge or somebody to decide whether you have the right to be greater than 1.5%.
If I could, if I could address that, first of all, EC and bylaw doesn't differentiate between a tear down and rebuild and an alteration and addition, for example. That's, that battle was fought years ago. The Jay Davis case put that one in the grave in, in the late 1990s. Okay? So your definition of alteration includes a demolition and rebuild of the structure. So the fact that it demolished or it doesn't change the legal status of the house. Second of all, if, if, if this is a Seashore bylaw calculation and this, and your bylaw tracks the use guidelines, you can't have more than one and a half times of what you had September 1st of 1959, habitable floor area. If we stick to that definition exactly, this house would be allowed to have one and a half times 513 or 503, depending on which number you go.
Yeah, yeah.
769.
77, yeah.
769, right. This house has gone to 896. You can't take that away from them. Even if they decide to rebuild the house, you can't take it away from them. So if, if this house, based on the Seashore calculation, is going from, um, you know, based on the, on the 1994 expansion, um, 1016 down to, um, 1016 down to 896, they're actually decreasing the non-conformity of the structure. And I have to give you an explanation of why you're, I'm even asking for a special permit. Because Justin didn't say that we needed one. He just said we needed a variance. When you look at that zoning determination, you need a variance. I threw the special permit in there to be safe. And because, because a lot of times you get in there and it's just like, and I looked at this, I saw that we were over. I saw that it's been over since 1994, that they have a right to expand. I didn't know how we were going to approach these numbers as we sat at this table. So if, in my perfect world, when, uh, which we're probably passed at this point, this hearing, but in my perfect world, the board would look at this application. We would bring into you what we, the changes that we want to make. You would consider those. And then you would make a finding that because we're decreasing the livable space from 1016 to 896, we're not required to have a special permit, we would withdraw that application. I just didn't want to be sitting in front of you without that.
Sure.
Possibility.
Sure.
So Paul, does the, our, our zoning bylaw incorporate the rules from the National Seashore? Are we, are we making a decision based on National Seashore rules or our zoning bylaw or both?
Our bylaw contains the language about the.
The Seashore district.
The Seashore district contains the language about adhering to the 50% maximum increase over what existed in 1959. That, that's in our bylaw. So we have to go by that.
Okay.
I'll just say a little bit off topic, but maybe the Seashore has its own set of regulations and federal. This board doesn't have to adhere to all that. So we just look at what's in our zoning bylaw. And this, I just bring this up because sometimes it gets tricky and depending on, you know, what points the Seashore may be pushing back on. They may start citing things that are in the federal regulations and not. This board, I think is, both boards, Plaine was always tried to like mediate that. So we're just getting to a point where everyone's comfortable. And I think that's always the best. But strictly speaking, this board looks at what's in our zoning bylaw. If the Seashore comes in, it says there was a whole bunch of federal statutes, that's, that's between the Seashore and the owner and what the owner, if the owner. That's between the seashore and the owner and what the owner, if the owner gets a approval.
Mm-hmm.
That the seashore, that's at their own risk. Since the seashore steps in and says, well, we don't agree, we're gonna, you know, that, but.
Okay.
So the long answer to your short question.
So you're saying that we could, we could approve this. I mean, my, my argument about whether or not that's valid, and I, and I appreciate your feedback on that, on that, Ben. I wanted to have an answer. So we could approve to the design, to the shape and size of the house. And the seashore could then say, bring up a separate appeal that and say, no, we think, we, we think we're gonna challenge that and keep to the one point five.
You mind if I jump in on this, Paul?
Yeah. Um, basically, when the Seashore Act was written, the intention was that the seashore would stay out of local zoning. And, and it has to do with leverage. They didn't have enough money to take everybody's property, and they didn't have the political capital to take over private properties. So what they said was, in the act, in the regulation, it says that if the town adopts as a regu, if the town adopts a zoning by law that's approved by the secretary. That incorporates certain minimum zoning standards that are in the CFRs, Code of Federal Regulations that actually is superintendent sites. Then any property that was in existence prior to September first of fifty-nine, residential property. That was either built or had a building permit pulled before September, became what's called an improved property. And the regulations and the law say that as long as the town maintains a by law that's approved by the secretary. That the applicant can, is entitled to a certificate of suspension of condemnation. They're entitled to a certificate. It's like a corporate good standing certificate you get from the Secretary of State. It just says, as of right now, we haven't taken your property. We can't take your property. So if, a, and the, and the, and the law goes on to say. That anytime somebody applies for a variance from the Board of Appeals. That the board is required to notify the applicant that the granting of the variance could subject the applicant to revocation certificate of suspension. Which is sense, and then it goes on to say that if the applicant applies for and receives. A variance or other exception from the zoning by law that's inconsistent with the goals and policies of the seashore as expressed in the regulations. The seashore can, if it wants, it can revoke the certificate of suspension, and it can put the property in the list of properties to be acquired by the seashore. So to make a long story short. Federal regulations are here, zoning regulations are here, there's no crossover. The only relationship is that the seashore has the right as in a butter. To come in and be heard as in a butter. And the case that we won against the seashore and Welford, the blast case affirmed that, you know, that they're just a really big a butter. But if, if you do get this, if we get this variance. And the seashore doesn't like the variance. They can send us a letter that says, we're gonna revoke your CSC, and we're, if we ever get the money, which they won't, we'll take your property. So the seashore. And usually what they'll say is they'll send a letter to the applicant as part of the process. It says, look, we don't like your project. If you keep going with this, we may take your, and I've had clients that have adjusted their projects. In this case, I don't see the seashore saying that. They're saying, look, we don't have a problem with the project, but we want you to make some adjustments.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's where, that's where.
Yeah.
So, but I'd like to, one more thing, if you don't mind, Madam Chair. I just wanna get back to the by law. The section of the by law that's at two point four seven says. It says, it allows removing alteration, enlargement, maintenance or repairs of existing one form residential structures. That will not increase the habitable space. By more than fifty percent of the habitable space existing in September first of nineteen fifty-nine. But when you go to the definition section, there's no definition for habitable space. So that's kind of what Paul and I are dealing with right here is. Uh, we're saying it's livable space. It's the space in the house that's inside the walls that you can live in. So that's that number. We're going from one oh one six down to eight sixty-nine. We're, we're decreasing the livable space, which I'm contending is the same.
Is habitable space, yes.
And I'm sorry to take up so much of your time.
Let me, let me, let me ask a question here. We've had it over the last two years and through town meeting. We've had a lot of discussion about maximum size within certain, what measure are we using? We're using the livable space measure? Cause I know it does not include basements as an example. What do, what is included in that calculation?
For the, for the purposes of this case, we're dealing with that section that was just cited, which is.
Understood. And, and all those other discussions over the last two years, was that livable space?
No, that's site, that's site coverage. And site coverage is, is the livable, it's the gross floor area of any roofed.
Okay, but it doesn't include basements. We.
Excluding basements and farmers' porches.
But it also includes garages. It includes, it includes sheds over a certain size.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, okay.
But.
And it's measured exterior wall to exterior wall. So.
But this is diff, but then you get it, there's a fifty percent of the habitable space for the structure. Then there's another. calculation for a certain expansion for a detached structure. That's why it's a, it is tricky.
Right.
To navigate because the seashore has this little special subsection of.
Understood, but, but, but most of that, haven't we concluded, or at least believe that since, you know, the statute of limitations. Gets them to where they are today?
Well, that part deals with the fact that. When was that? Twenty-two thousand?
Nineteen ninety-four.
Oh, nineteen ninety-four. So in nineteen ninety-four, the owners of the property then got approval. To expand from whatever it was, whatever it was to what it is now, the one thousand one fifty. I've just off the cuff, that probably, I don't know how that happened, but obviously they, they exceeded the fifty percent. Maybe that was.
But that was a long time ago.
But. As it said in the narrative, there's a statute of limitations that basically, it's overrun. So we just basically take it. They, they're entitled to that. They have it. It's. It's legal. And I don't, I agree with that. That's, we can't do anything about that.
Let me put words in your mouth then for a second. That says to me that they've reduced the size of this house from a thousand sixteen. To eight ninety-six, period. Why are we talking more about it? Isn't that it?
You agree with us on the numbers? I, I just wasn't.
It feels like the only discussion is, are those in fact the numbers? If, and if those are in fact the numbers, then yeah, it's, the, the house got smaller.
Well, and one further thing, you know, i- i- that one oh one six, they're allowed to have fifty percent on top of that for accessory structures, which we're not proposing. So, you know, so I, I, I think if, if, if you do what I would ask you to do would be to accept the habitable space number at one oh one six. Accept the proposed eight ninety-six and make a finding that we're not increasing the nonconformity. That we don't require the special permit, and that gets us back into the variance extension location and, and all that.
So Paul, is that supported though by our bylaws, by our, by the zoning ordinance?
Is what?
Is, that, that, that livable space is less. They're proposing a smaller livable space. Is that? Still less when you, when you talk, cause you said, we look, we look at site coverage, right? Which is different than the livable area calculation.
Yeah, so I know this is, this is confusing. For this, in the seashore though, we have to look at the habitable. Space and the site coverage. The site coverage is not an issue because they are under the site coverage limit. And they're not, we're under, triggering, and that's what the planning board would deal with.
Okay.
So I think you can take that part of the puzzle off the table. Now you're left with. Does this comply with the fifty percent rule, which we just went over, which I think. So, and I guess what attorney, lender's saying is that the board, and I agree with this, you could make. A finding that the special permit is not needed. So you could basically dismiss that. If you agree with the rationale that they're reducing, they're not, they're under it.
So I'm confused though, because in your staff, in your staff note.
I know.
It says we should consider why a new structure that does conform to the habitable floor area requirement of zoning by law. Two point four point one point seven cannot be constructed.
I was waiting.
Are you now saying?
I was waiting for someone to point out the error.
It's a confusing case. It's a complex.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I would say disregard that, cause I, I, I was wrong when I was looking at it. I, and actually, um. Didn't, I missed the, um. The second site plan where they had gone through that exercise, it has the red, so they, you can't do that. So that was just an oversight. And so I would say ignore that part of the staff report, please.
Okay.
And you can go on to make the determination whether you think you can dispense, I guess what I'm trying to say. As a board, you could make a decision to dispense with the special permit part of this if you agree with the rationale, and you could just go back to dealing with the variance. And I think you.
Okay.
Fine with that.
That's a decision we ought to make tonight, so at least.
Yes, I'm, I'm about to say, could, could I do an informal poll of the board? About dismissing the request for a special permit? Doug?
What's the question?
Given what we've just been talking about, and, and the circles we've been running around in. Do you agree that we could dismiss the request for a special permit?
Yes, based on what Paul just said, I, I would agree that, yes.
Hi.
Okay, uh, Martin.
Uh, yes, potentially.
And Jared.
Oh.
All right, then I would like to have a motion.
Well, man, I'm sure I think that's my request.
Okay.
Based on the, based on the informal poll of the board, actually, what I would like to do, if you don't mind. Is, well, no, I'll, I'll make the request. I would, I would request that we be allowed to withdraw our application for a special permit without prejudice.
Okay, all right. Good, good, good idea. Okay, um.
I can't make. I just wanna get back to the variance discussion as soon as possible, because that was amazing.
As long as possible.
Justin, I don't think we're gonna get that one finished tonight.
No, 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 I understand.
I don't either.
Okay. All right, so. May I have a motion to approve withdrawing the special permit request? Without.
Prejudice.
Any.
Right, for, for Z B eight to twenty twenty-four dash six, so you got that?
Yes, yes.
Um, so moved.
Okay, um, and. A second, please. Jared?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm going to roll call here. Um, vote now. In favor, Jared? Martin?
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes too. So the vote is five to nothing. We're finished with that piece. Now. Can we agree that you will come back to us in January?
Yes.
Um, with a somewhat revised plan, um, taking into consideration the seashore's concerns about various. Aspects of the moving of the house.
Yeah, well, I, I'm gonna, with the chair's permission, I'm gonna request a continuance for us to. Uh, to acknowledge the concerns of the board and the seashore, which I understand to be at this point, the, uh. The north-south orientation of the house, um, and east-west orientation of the house and location of the stairs on the west side and deck on the south side. Um.
Deck stair, not deck, right?
Well, decks, well, the, the structure on the south side is five feet off that lot. I just, I was supposed to look at that, so. Okay, so I, I, I understand those are the concerns at this point. If there's any other concerns that members would like us to look at, we're happy to. Um, I can tell you, and what I will do for, for you, Mr. Ridge, I'll come in with some title information on the ownership of the road. Cause I think that may be part of it.
I'd appreciate, I'd appreciate that, because if, if, if they do indeed own another twenty feet, then that.
Yeah, and, and I.
We can make accommodations to go further.
And in connection with, in connection with a, a previous approval of this board, I, I did, I ended up doing a title workup on the lots in the subdivision. As well as an ex, as well as an explanation of the implication, statutes and how they apply. But I think that might be really helpful to look at. So, and I'll look at this lot, we'll run this lot from the developer.
Right. And, and my contention, Ben, was that I'm looking at the plan that you provided.
I.
That's listing the national seashore against the hard, against that border.
I don't.
On, on the site plan.
Like plan away.
That's, I'm just, I'm, I'm sorry, Martin. What do you, what, what do you see on the plan? Site plan. When you look at the site plan, it says the national seashore owns this land right here.
Now, it says N F C Street.
No, no, right above that, it says National Seashore, Seashore.
Well, no, they're showing the butter on the north side as National Seashore.
Northern.
Yeah, no, that's, um, no, the, the ways are the ways. They're showing the seashore on the north of the property, but I don't think on the west of the property, they're showing that.
Yeah, I, I, it, it's, it's, there's four locations where it says Cape Cod National Seashore, and they seem to surround the property.
Yeah, no.
They've lined up a left-hand corner.
And here.
This is a way, and that's a way.
Well, it gets confusing too. When you look at the, an assessing map.
Yeah.
They've, all of the paper streets, which are still on, they've all, those lines have been. Erased, even though they're not, they're not exonerated. They don't, so it looks like the seashore property has just absorbed all of these roadways. But in fact, they do still exist with the rights preserved for it, so.
I'll prepare a memorandum for the board.
And in the case they did, they do. Would, would you then ask for the house to be moved in that additional fifteen feet back?
Well, no, in the case they, no, 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 because we, because we're not allowed to construct the house outside the lot lines. The only way we could do that would be to.
Oh, so you're saying the lot line's separate from the, what they own. They own the lot, but then they.
The lot lines are what they are, the ways are what they are, but the ownership of the way, and so the, and again, I know it's late, but.
No, no, I got it now. I.
No, well, there's one more piece of this, which is that the homeowners that own the ways have a right to use those ways for whatever they want. And if you drive around Eastham. Mr. Sheldon will tell you, there's a lot of paper roads out there that people have lawns and mailboxes well into. Because you have a forty-foot way, and you may have an improved traveled way of twenty feet wide.
Got a neighbor with a trailer that annoys me, yeah.
Yeah, with a trailer, okay.
Right there in that road.
So the only obligation that Chris and Deanna have with regard to that way is to not interfere with other lawful users of the way, which there's never gonna be up there. So they could, they can build their, let's say, for example, they come back with a five-foot setback on the foundation. Who might do? They still have, that still gives them twenty feet of the way, plus the other five feet to do whatever they want on their own land.
Right, right. And I, and I agree, and I wouldn't, and, and if, and, and when you do show us that they own to the center of the way. Then I would advocate that we do not add a, a permanent, uh, durable barrier at the five-foot line.
No, it could be at the center line.
Put it in the middle of the road. That, okay, so that's, that's my point is.
Okay, and, and I appreciate you letting me talk to you about that through, cause that's important.
All right.
Thanks.
I need a motion to approve a continuance for the variance hearing to January second. May I have?
So moved.
Well, whoa, whoa, whoa.
We have a question about availability.
Yeah, I'll be in Ireland with my daughter on January second, um.
The next meeting is February.
Go along.
Okay, Madam Chair, can we go to the meeting after that?
All right, we're looking for a day here.
After that is, uh, February sixth.
I'm fine if the board's fine.
Okay. February sixth is okay?
Wait.
Okay.
Hold on.
Is that the right day?
It's a Thursday.
We gotta hand it out here. Hold on, we got right in here. Yeah, zoning board, two six.
Okay, Doug, you move?
So moved, yes.
You have a second?
Every second.
Okay. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I'm sorry about that.
And I. All right, that's five to zero. Okay, so we'll see you in February.
Great meeting. Thank you all.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you for all the back and forth and the information. We are, we're always learning.
By February, she might know more about the condition of that driveway too.
Thank you for your time.
Sorry, is that bad luck?
Too early.
Okay, can we go to the approval of the minutes from September fifth, please? If everybody's looking at that for a moment.
I was, I was.
I thought you showed up.
No.
Fully refused.
The only case was one of my clients.
Oh.
I started watching on TV.
The best, oh, we didn't write, um, who was here?
Thank you. Have a nice holiday.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Where?
Merry Christmas.
No, there wasn't anybody. He signed in.
Next time.
Yeah, right. Okay, um, if you look, if you're looking at your copy of the minutes from September fifth. Um, I'm, I'm going, just run down the first page to where it says cases. And it says case number Z B eight twenty-four twenty, uh, dash oh three, voted to grant a residential special permit, et cetera, et cetera. That statement should not appear in the minutes until after.
Narrative.
After we have approved the, uh, findings of fact and the conditions. So it should be appearing, and it does appear on page five. So. Uh, if we simply omit that from page one. Since it is in the proper place on page five, then we could take a vote to approve the minutes of September fifth. If I could have a first, or, or a, a move to approve. That makes sense to everybody?
So moved as, as amended.
Okay, as amended. Okay. All right, so Doug, and a second, please.
I second that.
Okay, Martin. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Aye, all right, five to nothing here, and a move to adjourn.
I moved. Any, any other cases for January?
Not yet. Okay.
Yeah, still have time under the deadline. Nothing yet, but.
Okay.
They may squeak in.
Okay, all right. A move to adjourn was Jared? No, Martin. Second?
Our one thing, um. Did all of you receive an email with like a scheduling poll?
Yeah.
Trying to round everybody up for, okay.
How did it come out? Have you, have you determined it yet, or?
Uh, no, we're still waiting for, to get some, I just wanna make sure everyone got the.
Was it one of the options of January second?
When did, when did you send it?
Uh, I think it went, um.